We'll get our meeting called to order. I'd like to welcome everybody. We had a really fun opportunity earlier this evening to have a reception for our PTO leadership in the district. Like many of you know, we have 15 schools in our district, each of which have their own parent-teacher organization, and we're very appreciative for those individuals who are able to give back, to allow our PTOs to flourish, and for the neat academic and social and just all sorts of fabulous ways that they enhance our school district and the education that each of our students receive. We would also like to welcome our athletic and our academic scholars this evening. We're pretty excited that we have some special presentations for you. And with that, we'll go with our roll call.
All board members are present this evening.
Thank you. If you'd please rise, we will start have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you direct your attention to the podium, Dr. Wall has a very special presentation.
I'd like to invite Rachel Cole to the podium, please, Director of Guidance at Carmel High School. Very special presentation as we recognize our perfect ACT scores from Carmel High School. Rachel, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. We have nine students who made a 36 score, which is the highest score you can make on the ACT, and we're going to take time to recognize them tonight. Just want to say your name if you wouldn't mind to come up. David Anderson, or Anderson David. I said I wasn't going to do that, and I did. Pranav Shiram. And William Tippins. And we also, just so you know, we gathered this group together and basically said, "What did you do?"[198.01][198.01](laughing) to try to help some of our other Carmel High Schools, and it had a really nice discussion with them. They were all open and sharing, but a lot of practice tests, I believe, was what we got out of most of that, and timing their testing. But I really appreciated that they took the time out of an SRT last spring to come and talk with us and share that as well.
And students, I do want to mention, there are plenty of sweet treats in the back, so before you leave, please grab some of those.
I'd like to invite
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me. I'd like to invite Jim Manske to the podium, Director of Athletics at Carmel High School. Very important and very special spotlight on excellence as we recognize the Carmel High School girls and boys swim teams. Jimmy?
Chris and I were hoping we were a continuation of the perfect ACT scores.[346.62][346.62](laughing) But we have had my transcripts up here before. We know that is not accurate. So, it is my honor and privilege to present the 2017 National Champion Boys and Girls Swimming and Diving Programs. And we have some individuals representing those programs that we'd like to have come forward as I make some remarks about another incredible season for both of these teams. Many times, we've had the opportunity to introduce state championship teams to the board, and these are very special occasions. This combined national championship is only the second for a public school, and that occurred in 1986. Swimming World Magazine awards the title of national champion after putting state meet times into a dual meet format for all schools throughout the country. After all times were calculated, the hounds were named the public school national champions. This is the fifth time in a row for the girls' program, and the eighth time in nine years they have been named national champions. The girls' team has won 31 consecutive state championships in a row, which is a national record for all states and sports. The boys' program won their 17th overall state title last winter and their third straight. I could go on and on about the accolades and times that these individuals have, but there are few things and just a few short snippets here of a sentence that kind of summarize our programs, I think. Watching these guys pick up trash in the stands on the deck after the state meet is something that's very special to see, that they see the bigger picture of what they're doing and how they're serving the people that help support their meets and the championship formats that go on. Watching the tradition of them shaking hands with all their coaches as they exit practice every day, something that speaks volumes about the type of young men and women that are being raised in our households, and also the commitment of our parents, which is an unwavering support and just a willingness to do anything that's asked by our coaching staff, and we very much appreciate it. It is the total package and very much the envy of many programs throughout the country. This time, I'd like to introduce Chris Plum, who's the head coach, to say a few words about these special individuals and our programs.
Thank you for having us, and we're honored to be here, certainly humbled. Obviously, none of this happens without the tremendous just environment which is created by our school district, and particularly Jimmy, his unwavering support is appreciated for all the athletic teams, but we especially appreciate that in the swimming pool. And I know there's not a whole lot of athletic directors that are willing to come down on the pool deck and say hello every now and then, so we appreciate that. We have four seniors here who represented us with class last year, and I know will lead the way this year. No pressure, guys.[521.12][521.12](laughing) But over here on my far left, we have Andrew Cuchon, who's still deciding on where to go to school.[529.37][529.37](applause) He's got it down to two, but I'll keep it there. Grace, can I say it, or should we keep it? Okay. Grace Esserbrook is looking to attend Penn next year.[546.41][546.41](applause) And then we have two orange schools. Drew Kibler, who will be attending the University of Texas next year.[556.12][556.12](applause) And Trudy Rothrock will be going to the University of Tennessee.[562.79][562.79](applause) So, thank you.
We will pause momentarily, so if people would like to go home and study or enjoy the nice weather before it turns, please feel free, and, oh, you're welcome. Seeing that we do not have any public participation, we will go straight to consent. May I get a motion on the table to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very exciting that in consent, we just appointed the next principal of Town Meadow Elementary. Nikki Rash is with us tonight. Want to highlight that Nikki is a fit for the profile that was developed by stakeholder parents, stakeholder staff members. And again, this was not in the timing of beginning of the year, but what's exciting about Nikki's appointment is she is a fit for that leadership profile. And it's one of those things hiring is done, and a matter that we try to get the best fit. We didn't have that to start the school year, and Nikki reconsidered and wanted to apply for the position, so she did. And I thank Rhonda Turner for being here this evening too, as support and mentor from Orchard Park. Thank you, Rhonda. But a couple of things about Nikki, and we'll send out a press release later tonight. Nikki has spent 19 years in education, most recently serving as assistant principal for Orchard Park Elementary. She began her career as a first-grade teacher in Fort Wayne Community Schools, served as a kindergarten teacher and instructional coach for Carmel Clay Schools. I really want to thank the parents and the staff for their patience, their input for the leadership profile is so critical in trying to find that fit. Very confident that Nikki brings a leadership style where she builds relationships, gets to know the staff, gets to know the parents, gets to know the kids. Very visible, engaging leader, and those are very important qualities in the profile. So, Nikki, welcome to the leadership team. Congratulations, and we look forward to great things at Town Meadow. Continued great things. And we will transition Kim Barrett out. Kim has done a great job just stepping in to be an interim. Parents have recognized that, staff have recognized that, so we're going to hand off the baton through October and have a smooth transition so Nikki can get to know the staff, the parents, and the kids through October, and allow for there be a seamless transition as we start the school year. So Nikki, welcome aboard.
Pam?
Just want you to know, that's another Orchard Park person.[807.44][807.44](laughing)
Well, you know, can't let it go.
Congratulations, Nikki. At this particular time, I'm going to suspend a regular board meeting to open a hearing to allow for public input regarding the proposed 2018 budgets, the three-year capital projects plan fund, and the 12-year bus replacement fund. And so that would be at 7:15. On August 28th, Mr. McMichael presented the proposed 2018 budgets, the three-year capital projects fund plan, and the 12-year bus replacement plan. The board discussed these proposals and authorized the administration to advertise for a public hearing at that time. Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments regarding these proposals before we invite members of the public to share comments?
No, just as you said, this is the opportunity for any public input that there might be for the board to consider.
Thank you. And we'll just wait a few seconds if anybody comes. So, if anybody has any comments they'd like to share, floor is open. Okay. Seeing that there are no public comments, we will close the hearing. And we'll resume our regular business meeting. First plan, or first action, we have our change orders for the 2017 finishes and renovations at the Carmel High School. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. These change orders, there are three of them, and they total, they're a total add change order of $31,735. The board can see from the report that there's actually one DDEC change order, and then which closes out that contractor, and then two other add change orders.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to approve the overall addition and the $10,000 saving deduction? Is that moved? Second? Mike, we'll give it to Mike. Discussion?
Yeah, what is our contingency at this time for these funds? Do we know? I mean, are we anywhere near money that we have left over?
Well, we're not finished with the projects yet, so we did a number of finishes this summer, but we, the budget that we have exceeded the amount of time that we had to do the work in the summer, so we'll continue to do this work next spring and summer.
Any other questions? Thank you. And we'll go ahead and vote all those in favor of the 2017 finishes and refinishing renovations at Carmel High School. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the change orders for the drain improvement project at the high school.
Yes, and this project is, this is a DDEC change order in the amount of $20,000, and it's closing out the project. This was the unused contingency allowance for that project.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to approve the $20,000 savings?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our course changes for 2018-19, and for that, we turn to Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. This evening for discussion, I bring you some course changes from Carmel High School for the 2018-19 school year. It's very exciting as we go through the courses. We have several new courses proposed. One is on community service where students can receive credit, where they man a tech help desk for both students and for teachers, which will really help with our technology, and the students will get that hands-on experience. Another one is a robotics and design innovation course, where the students will have the opportunity, that are interested in that engineering and design, to have the opportunity to take a course such as this. We also are expanding our culinary arts program where they're looking at a course for hospitality management, so they're looking at the other side of the hotel. You know, right now, we have the culinary with the restaurant piece, but the other side of the house with the hotel. We have many students that are interested in that, and so they're adding that course. We have several elective courses in social studies that we are proposing. Two are mandated by state law. Ethnic Studies and Indiana Studies are two elective courses that we are mandated through the past legislative session. And then the other course, African Studies, is a course that we had interest from students and staff to add that course as an elective course. Also, we're looking at adding a career exploration internship where students, juniors, and seniors would receive credit for internships in their junior and senior year. And then we have some course modifications and deletions.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. I open the floor to discussion. Questions? Pam?
Yes. I'm just wondering, I see where debate and speech are being deleted. Are we replacing that with anything so that the students still get the opportunity to learn those skills, or is this just being deleted?
No. It's being deleted because we had, in the last several years, we've had very few students, like one to two students, actually sign up for the course. And one of the reasons for that is several years ago, you may recall, we added an ACP speech class for their senior year where the students take, it's an ACP class, so they get actually Indiana University credit for their speech credit, and so many of our students are taking that, and so we have the very low numbers in these two elective
Yes, Lynn?
I have two questions here. So I see a couple of courses here are required, are added because of the requirement from the state, and some are deleted due to low enrollment. What are other reasons for adding or removing courses such like, such as like last week, I mean, last meeting, we had a science program evaluation. So typically, program evaluation lead to a change, changes in curriculum, like removing or adding courses?
Possibly. A program evaluation could be a reason. For example, when we did our program evaluation in our middle school, and we looked at the need to have additional STEM courses, we added those courses, and we added STEM, and then this year, we'll bring Project Lead the Way, the Gateway Program, in through eighth grade, which we did add three years ago, but we wanted to phase it in. So it could be a program evaluation. It could be, like the African Studies, is there may be interest from students and from teachers to add the course. Also, looking at courses where students are interested, like for example, the innovation course. We have students that, that's a continuation where we have a very strong robotics club at the high school as an extracurricular, but as students looking at those additional courses, that interest to put that into the student day. The state also will add courses to the course catalog through the state, and then we'll look at those to say, you know, do we have student interest in those different courses? So there's a variety of reasons of adding courses, and typically, when we delete courses, it's because of low enrollment or low student interest in those courses.
I have another question, if you don't mind. How are the course changes here affecting our budget? So like when you add, say, hospitality management, the second course, do we have existing faculty resources to cover that?
Yes, because when we go and we look at the staffing piece, whenever we, there are new courses proposed by the departments at the high school, there's a whole curriculum advisory committee that is made up of teachers, parents, students, administrators, and so the department would propose that course, and then they would look at several different things. One is who is eligible to teach it, so what's the teaching license required? And so for like the culinary arts, that is taught in the family consumer science department, and so that will be existing faculty that would have a section of that course or what have you, and so they may not have a section of a different course. It depends on, it's all based, the staffing's all based on the student course requests that we, they do, they actually, starting very soon, in November, they start their course request, and then in the spring, we do the whole staffing. And so, but it's all within the existing staffing, and they, the staffing change is based on student course requests.
Thank you.
Amy, I've got a couple of questions for you. The first, I noticed capstone seminar and research are now moving down to sophomore/juniior options. Is this because there's yet another class they can take as a senior that's in the AP capstone programming, or is it just opening up their schedule to take other classes?
It's opening up their schedule. There's not another, the capstone research would be the last course, but they did open it up because we had interest from students. Many of our students want to take the W-131 classes through their senior year, and so they'll do both, the capstone and then those other courses. And so that's why it's just moving it down for those students that might be interested in that.
And then that seminar course counts for your English 10? Or do you have to take seminar?
No, the seminar course would count for the English 10.
Okay. Second question, the IB physics. It says it's changed from a one-year course to a two-year course. So, how does that, how do you stretch that out? Is it the same material, and they're just digging deeper, or would?
No, they, many of our IB courses can be either taught as a one-year course or a two-year course, and so it would be an additional year of curriculum, and so they would, instead of receiving the two credits that they would receive in a one-year course, one for each semester, they would receive the four credits for that. But it's additional material in the IB courses. But the AP psychology is not. That was in one semester, and most of the high schools teach the AP psychology in a full year, and they said this would be much better for our students to have that in a full year. That's not additional material, but the IB is.
Okay, so with that IB physics, well, students, they're required, I'm assuming, then, to take it for two years. It's, they're building?
Not necessarily. They could take it for a single year and not take the second year. Sometimes they'll take the standard level, which is the IB standard level, which they're offering here, and then they may move into the IBHL, which is the higher level.
I see.
Or they could do the two years of the SL.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Pam?
Yes. On the career exploration, is that incorporated into the vocational ed? That, are we offering any internships for vocational kids? I mean, kids who are going into building trades or auto?
This, this one is not through that. This one, this is through our special services department, and so these are for our students that are doing internships, their junior and senior year. They'll allow them to earn credit for those internships, so they work with a job coach, and so they'll work in the community at different businesses, and then this will allow them to receive that. The, we are looking at possibilities of more partnerships with IB Tech
Okay.
in the areas, in the voc-ed areas.
Okay.
But that's one that we're still looking at and exploring.
Yep, because that would be kids that are career-ready, but not necessarily college.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Great questions. Any other questions?
Great. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Dudley, and then we will look forward to bringing that back for approval in October.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have reports, and the first is our student assessment, and for that, we turn
So this evening, I wanted to share with you some different assessments that we look at, and this is looking at a very bird's-eye view. We're looking at all of our students that take these assessments. And this first graph is looking at our students' achievement, their growth in math, and this is measured on our Math MAP Growth Assessment. Sometimes it's better known as NWEA. The actual test is called MAP Growth, but most people know it by NWEA. So this is our students looking over a three-year period, because as you'll recall, we started with MAP testing in our elementary schools back in 2014-15 school year. So this is looking at our students as when they started, that first blue line is our students when they were kindergartners, and then as they moved into first grade. So it's looking at a year's growth from fall to fall. So fall of their kindergarten year to fall of their first grade year. So it's also taking into account that summer as well. But as you can see, over the last three years, from 2014 to 2017, in each of our grade levels from kindergarten to first, first to second, second to third, we can see our students are making good, some very good significant growth, like in kindergarten. Also, looking down at fourth to fifth grade, fifth to sixth, sixth to seventh, and seventh to eighth grade, we see, we're seeing some significant growth in those areas with those groups of students. And so each bar is a different group of students, but it is looking at their year growth. And when we look programmatically, we look, we look at it from this angle, so not looking at exact cohorts of growth. So this is our MAP Growth, and then the next one is our reading MAP Growth. So this is also looking at our students, the same piece from when they were kindergarten students into first grade. And you can see in kindergarten, we're seeing some very good growth in fifth to sixth, sixth to seventh, and seventh to eighth. In our first to second, second to third, third to fourth, we're seeing a bit of a decline this past year, so really looking at it programmatically, what are the pieces, why might that be happening? And digging into that, are there different instructional strategies that we need to look at? Because again, the way we're looking at it from this view is looking at it programmatically. So what are those pieces that we need to maybe go in and tune up in those areas, in the areas of reading? So this next slide, this is changing assessments, and this is looking at our I-step assessment. And as you'll recall from previous presentations, I-step is a very different type of assessment than the MAP Growth Assessment. than the MAP Growth Assessment. I-Step is a criterion reference. So basically, what it's looking at, it's a summative assessment that is measuring the student's progress, the student's achievement, measured against the standards. And it is a one, one assessment, it's a summative assessment, and it's not looking at the student's growth. So this is looking at it at a very bird's eye view, where the first several graphs, this is comparing Carmel Clay's achievement against the state. So we first have the English Language Arts, all of our students in third through eighth grade. And you can see Carmel Clay's achievement very much outshines where we are with the state. Our achievement is fairly stable over those three years. And then in 10th grade, for both English Language Arts and math, we only have two years of data, because the test changed, and we only have the two years. But you can see in the area, and we'll show, I'll show another graphic later on with our math. But when we're looking at the math in our 10th grade, that is an area that we're looking at, and it's not just, whereas we're looking at 10th grade, but we're looking more programmatically over what does our math instruction look like, as we, an area that we do need to improve upon. So this is drilling it down even, even further. So this is looking at I-Step again. This is the same assessment over a three-year period. And this is three years of the same assessment. As you recall, three years ago, the state changed the assessment, and it was based on the new Indiana academic standards that were also based on the Common Core standards, which were much more rigorous than the previous standards. And so the tests changed, and the tests did become more difficult. And, but this is three years of looking, testing it against those same standards. And as you can see, we have, if you look at 5th grade here in English Language Arts, we do have some significant achievement in the pass-plus. That dark green is the pass-plus, where we have 50% of our 5th graders scored at a pass-plus. And our students that did not pass, that significantly reduced from 13.7 to 11%. So we did see some changes. And then also, in 3rd grade and 4th grade, you can see that our pass-plus did increase, especially in 4th grade, we did see some significant increase in that pass-plus area in English Language Arts for I-Step, which is always a positive that we want to see. We would like to see the did-not-pass, we want to see those decrease. We don't see significant decreases in those areas, but that's, we're continuing to look at that and work on that. But seeing them in that pass-plus area too, we want to see our students move into that. So this is our 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, English Language Arts again. And again, you can see in our 6th grade, some significant growth from 39.6% in pass-plus to 50.8% in pass-plus in 6th grade, from one year to the next, and some significant decrease in the did-not-pass, which is a very positive sign that we want to see. And then the other two pass-plus areas as well, we see some increase in that area. So we'll continue to measure those and look at that from a programmatic standpoint. So as we look at math, in our, I-Step in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, again, we can see some significant pass-plus in our 4th grade, as well as, not so much significant pass-plus, but a significant decrease in our 5th grade and did-not-pass in math, which is a positive sign as well. Our 3rd grade, we saw actually an increase by about 3 percentage, a little bit under 3 percentage in our did-not-pass. And so that's an area, as we're looking at different groups of kids, but as we're looking programmatically, what are those pieces that we need to shore up there, so that they're going in the other direction? And then in our math, in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, we are seeing some significant gains, again, in the pass-plus in 6th grade. In 7th and 8th grade, we see some shifts in the other directions. But looking at that 7th grade math, those past two years, looking at the did-not-pass, that is an area that we definitely need to dig into and look at what's happening that we need to shore up as well, in those math areas, they're looking at those did-not-pass areas. And then also, in our 8th grade, we have a significant shift in the did-not-pass as well. And then in 10th grade, as you can see, 10th grade I-Step is, we have our English Language Arts, which was, our scores are about the same. But again, especially in the areas of math, that's an area that we're looking programmatically all the way through in our math instruction to shore up, not just at the high school, but in our middle schools, and also in our elementary schools, to improve those scores as well. So questions that you might have?
Well, I do have one to begin. First, thank you for bringing this to us. And, and I'm glad we recognize there are some gaps, and that we are in the process of identifying what those gaps are, so we can move in the right direction. At one point, when we were offering remediation for those who did not pass, we made it a point to capture those who almost did not pass. Do we, are we continuing to do that?
Yes. We do a variety of different pieces. First is looking at shifting from just the remediation to the intervention. So catching them before they do not pass to kids that may be at risk. One of the pieces that we do have, which is a nice piece with our MAP Growth, with our NWEA, they have a very strong predictor on, so we can see our students, and they have linking studies to I-Step. And you can determine, you can see, okay, is the student at risk at not passing? And then you have all year before they take the test in the spring, to really shore up those skills. And it is a very strong predictor when we go back and look at the assessments that they took in NWEA, and look at the predictor, predictability. That is a strong predictor. So we really want to focus more on the intervention and catch them before they fail. But we also look at, in some areas, we look at those students that not only are just a few points on, you know, passing and closer to the did-not-pass, but we also look at the other end of this scale, those students that are path, that are just a few points away from the pass-plus. And so how can we also improve their achievement as well? And what are the pieces that we need to shore up? So we look at it in all of those different pieces.
Thank you. Lynn?
Oh, again, thank you very much for giving us a presentation on that. And as far as I know, NWEA is one of the cultures in addition to I-Step.
Yeah, correct, correct.
To your very, to the very beginning of the presentation, I try to understand what the numbers mean when we do those mass growths. What does like a 20 or 10, or what are these numbers?
Those are the average, thank you. Good question. I'm sorry, I didn't put that on there. That is the average RIT growth. So when the students take the NWEA assessment, they get a RIT score. And so this is the average RIT score growth from comparing year to year. So the kindergarten students into first grade, and their growth from kindergarten to first grade, or their growth from first grade to second grade. And so it's the average of all of the students, their RIT scores in the percentage.
And as, as we can see here, when kids move from kindergarten to first grade, this is where they get the biggest growth, right?
Correct.
Much higher than others.
Correct.
And I know we are talking about NWEA here, but there's also another term MAP. So is it official term change, terminology change?
No. NWEA is the company, is the nonprofit organization that, that sells MAP. MAP Growth is the official name of
Of the test.
The assessment itself.
Okay.
Yes. But most people know it by NWEA. But it's MAP Growth is actually the official name, because NWEA has several different assessments. They have MAP Navigator, which looks at a progress monitoring assessments. The MAP Growth is the assessment that all of our students take kindergarten through 8th grade.
I see. I also have, have questions about the NWEA report. I compare my daughter's report this year to last year. I noticed some differences, and I tried to understand, tried to find online resources, but it looks like the online, the website hasn't been updated yet, was a new format. So I think I can ask you later, maybe, just showing you the report.
Thank you. So you're talking about their new, their new reports that they have?
Right.
Where it shows, yes.
It's slightly different, but the website's still showing the instructions to interpret last year's.
Last year's report, okay.
Thank you.
Pam?
Yes, I, I just have one question. The MAP scores, these are across the district, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm assuming we do the same thing per school, so that we can look at the growth in the, in the individual schools and figure out what needs to be done in the school itself?
Yes, yes. The same report, this is, this actually comes out of our NWEA program. And so each school can pull up this report. And putting it side by side, year to year, you, you have to pull several reports together, but you very easily could pull up each year and then look at. And so all of our schools, we dig down and drill down to the data for all of our schools and look for that growth.
And then we can look at, at individual schools and figure out which schools may need more Title I help or instructional assistance, so they can achieve?
Well, yes. I mean, we, we look at schools that, we want to make sure that all of our schools are showing growth. Title I not necess, Title I is based on another formula that comes through the state.
Right.
Formula, and so right now
But they still offer help for the, for the buildings if money-wise?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yes, Katie?
I just had a comment. I think, and not maybe every parent or, you know, even realizes, but I had to make a phone call to my child's teacher, because they had a significant drop with their NWEA. And she was explaining the amazing resources that these teachers have with these test scores, how they can look into behind the scenes to see exactly where a student may need a little extra help. And so the information that's sent home to the parents gives us a lot of insight. But the teachers also have many, many resources to see, you know, where this child is struggling, or where actually, like the test score came from. And so I think that is a really nice resource for our teachers, so they can know exactly what to work on and, you know, what to look at. So I just think that, just wanted to make that comment of how there is lots of options with the NWEA, especially to kind of exact, to see where their students are.
Yes, yes. And the Learning Continuum is a very powerful tool, where it can really drill down student by student to determine what are they ready to learn next, and where are the pieces where we need to shore up to make sure that all of our students are successful.
And I'm just going to piggyback on what you'd said. I know as a school district, it's very important for us to have some type of a growth model to measure how well our students are doing, and how we can, you know, better meet their needs. And as a board, that was, has been one of our legislative priorities over the past few years, is, is having assessment tools that actually measure growth and not just a stagnant number. So we will continue on that path. So, any other questions?
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Dudley.
Thank you.
That was fantastic. We appreciate that. And moving right along to our monthly financial update, we have Roger.
Okay. Our projection, our actual right now is, is very close to what we would have anticipated. You'll recall that the last, a month ago, I noted that our ending balance was higher than what it would have been had our 1617 contract been paid out timely. And so you can see now where our balance is about 9.2 million, and it's dropped a little over 3 million since the last month. And that's because all the retro pay has been made, and that's cleared through the system. And the second thing, as you know, happens, our, receipts from our referendum come primarily when people pay their taxes. So as we progress through the year, we will, you know, we will not be receiving that revenue, so that until, you know, people pay their taxes in November. So it will go down. And somewhere here, we'll have a third pay, and that will, that will drive the balance down as well. And then as we receive the referendum revenue late in the year, then you'll see it to start coming back up again. So we're just pretty much where we would have anticipated we would be at this time of the year.
Thank you, Roger. I open up the floor to questions or comments. Roger, you did a fantastic job.
(laughing) Thank you.
We have, we have no questions. So, moving right along, we're jumping right into report, actually Superintendent's Report. So, Dr. Wall?
I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Board member reports. Mike, I have a question, not necessarily a report, but on our legislative priorities. We're hoping to bring those to the board next month. I know in the meantime, Dr. Wall was going to look over those with his team. And TIF came up as a question, part of a conversation. Do you have anything you want to add, or do we, that, I, that's an area of, I don't know that it's so much a priority in our particular district. I think it might be in other districts. And so I think I would like some feedback from probably Dr. Wall and our administration on our legislative priorities.
Yeah, and, I mean, we had Dr. Wall and myself met with Mo Merhoff, who is the Director of One Zone. When we were at the One Zone Lunch, she requested that she would like to meet with us, and we were happy to, and we value the relationship we have with the chamber. So we had some input on that. As you may recall, TIF has been on ISBA's legislative priority for a number of years. And we have felt, because of our relationship that we have with the City of Carmel, that that was not necessarily one of our priorities. So I have, this year I left it on there, and we can talk about it more. I did have a conversation with today, just today, with Corey Meyer, who's the Executive Director for CRC, Carmel Development Commission, and her Assistant Director. We talked a little bit about it, kind of confirmed the same reasons we've not done it in the past. So when we do, I will circulate revised legislative priorities based upon the comments I received before last meeting, cleaning them, cleaning them up. And I do, we can have more discussion about the TIF point, but my thought at this point is that we will remove it as one of our priorities. I think, as I look at the last draft, we had, after I combined the numbers that we had before, I was down to seven. And when we take away, if we remove the TIF one, we'll be down to six. And the real, most of them are big picture items, nothing for a specific piece of legislation like we've had in years past, which I think is sort of consistent with the ISBA priorities this year. We're not as specific as they've been in the past. And part of that might be, it's a non-budget year. And I think part of it, and we'll probably hear more at the ISBA conference, is maybe a change in who's doing the legislative priorities. And obviously, it's a committee, but the leadership has changed there. So I will circulate the revised legislative priorities, and I will leave it up to you if we want to have an opportunity for, how you want to put it on the agenda for discussion and approval, based upon the timeframe that we have between now and the rest of the year.
That sounds fantastic. Any other comments or questions or conversations we'd like to have amongst the board? Okay, I'll just make a few announcements. Upcoming meetings and upcoming opportunities. I know we have the Indiana School Board Association's Fall Conference, so for additional professional development. We'll be attending Monday and Tuesday. I know there's a big legislative meeting for Mike, as our delegate. And there's some other opportunities for the rest of us, so I look forward to that next week. We have Fall Break, October 13th and 16th. We've got a nice four-day weekend, so I hope everybody has some time to recoup and regenerate before we kick into a busy season. And with that, meeting adjourned.